I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you can take your seats. All right, let's go ahead. Actually Valerie's not back yet, so we'll have a roll call in just a second. But let's go ahead and start with the pledge, and then by the time we're done with the pledge, she'll be back. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to do the public invited to be heard a little different tonight. We're going to have, we're going to separate it into two pieces. Piece number one is called Kukua, right? It's the, it's anybody here who's wanting to talk about the residential daycare facility AKA youth rehab facility. And then the other group is going to be called anybody other than if you're here to talk about the Kukua project issue. And so that way we can, we're going to treat the public invited to be heard like a public hearing, if that makes sense. So when we talk about that particular issue, and it should get there fairly quickly, we will then take the time to have people come up and take their three minutes and share with us their thoughts as we're discussing that issue. That way your, public's more involved, it's not rolling over into time that we've now forgotten about your concerns, and we can be held accountable regardless of, or more accountable regardless of how we decide tonight. Sound good? All right, sounds good. All right, with that, I also remind you that there's only three people on the list, so if you want to be on the first call public invited to be heard for the group other than Kukua, you need to get your name on this list, or else you're going to have to wait till the end of the meeting. So that said, get your name on the list. All right, we've not done roll call yet Valerie, do you want a roll call? Pretty please.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Peck.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Bagley, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you Valerie. All right, do I have a motion for the approval of minutes for January 23rd?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second for the, oh, it's not, it's not coming up, so just, yeah, so anyway, so let's go ahead and vote. Maybe we haven't, have we all checked in? Is that it?
No.
Everybody hit your plus button.
Well, you can't do that now.
Well, don't do that now.
So five people.
Maybe mine.
I did.
Did you restart it just now?
I'm in, I've hit, I even voted, twice.
Well, look at that, you're not in.
Well, the motion passes unanimously, even though I'm not in. What do I need to do to get in?
Oh, I'll start it over.
All right.
Do we all have to say it yet?
Yeah, all of us sign in.
All right, let's sign in.
Wait for the poll. Okay. Now we're here.
All right, the sign in has ended. All right, all right, now are there any future agenda revisions or motions to direct the city manager and/or staff for future agenda items? All right, well, one of the things that I wanted to do is, not everybody in the audience and staff councils aware, there was a, we have what's called the Longmont Fair Campaign Practices Act. I don't know if that's who you're talking about. But one of the things I'd like to add to a future agenda, and instead of just me directing Harold to do it, I wanted to do it in public and have the council hopefully back me up on it. I think that it's possible that certain candidates who want to run for public office could be faced with fines that I think personally are unconscionable, whether it's, tens of thousands of dollars is too much when you're earning a thousand dollars a month and you're seeking to do a public service. And so what I'd like to do is actually have city council ask the city attorney's office to bring back the options for what the city should do, meaning what does the state statute say, and is that enough? And if it's not enough, then what do other cities do and what should we do? Any problems by putting that on the future agenda? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you Mayor Bagley. I will be in support of bringing this item back, partially because I do feel that some of the fines make it more difficult for folks who are not, more, let's see.
Savvy.
No, I was going to talk about the economics of allowing people that may not be rich to run for office. And for instance, if somebody racks up $16,000 in fines, as a specific example, there's not a lot of people like myself, if I had racked up that, I would not really have a good avenue of paying that back in an expedient fashion, so.
I would agree. Mayor Protam Christensen.
I think this should be part of a broad, I'm sorry, I would advocate bringing this back, but not just this, I think, well, we could start with this. I think we really need to take a look at the Fair Campaign Practices Act, which previously had an oversight committee, and then it was eliminated by city council. That would really, I think we need to really reexamine several things about the campaign, Fair Campaign Practices Act. I don't approve of getting rid of it. I think that it needs to be examined, because it has been used, for instance, against Councilman Moore, who's here tonight, and I, we were both hit with $6,000 of fines, which actually proved to be unfounded, but it would, took a huge amount of time for both of us to deal with that issue, and it was a very ugly way to start out. So I think we really need to examine certain aspects of that, but I think we need to strengthen, if anything.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you Mayor Bagley. I agree with you, I think we should do this, but I would like Eugene, if you're, when you look at this, to look at the last sentence under section 2.04, .206.5, the electionary and communications, and under subsection A, after that last sentence, add something about candidates making an expenditure less than $250. Don't have to report that if it is reported on the disclosure reports. Just bring that up and look and see if that's possible. And, oh, one more thing, since we're doing this, can we make it backdated to like, before this election? Like August 17th? I don't know if you can do that or not. You can do it, great. You'll look into us doing it. Good enough, thanks.
Councilmember Warren.
Thank you Mayor Bagley. I concur with just about everything that's been said. I think what we really need is to clarify the language of reporting, because if you look at the last election and the previous elections disclosures, nobody pretty much did it the same. And a lot of us, a lot of us who went and took the class and did it, you know, in the city clerk's office and thought we were doing exactly the right thing, didn't come out doing the right thing. And it should really be possible to follow the letter of the law and be in good shape. Nobody had any undisclosed expenses after all. It was just the way they were disclosed, and this is wrong. It should be, it should be comprehensible by an ordinary person, so that an ordinary person can run for city council.
And so, and to be clear, I'm not bringing, speaking for myself, I didn't bring this up, I'm 100% behind the transparency in the act. What I'm against is using it as a political hammer to, I mean, I literally, I was the one who, anyway, I could literally hammer on anyone who ran in this campaign. Yeah, everybody. And so we got, we got a, it's just not right to be able to do that against each other. So looks like we will have a future, future meeting. Now, the other thing is that by way of, I do think personally, my legal opinion, which nobody here is my client, second issue is I think that, keeping in mind that Sarah Levison was my opponent, keeping in mind that she was the one that filed a campaign complaint against me, and I paid my fine, and I was wrong, and I'm sorry, and that's why I paid my fine, keeping in mind that I was the one who filled out the complaint against her, and keeping in mind that the fees were $16,000, which is unconscionable, I would actually ask that we, as a council, I would move that we instruct the city clerk and the city attorney that regardless of how that ends up, whether she appeals it or not, I would actually move that we instruct the city attorney's office not to collect on it. Meaning, just let it sit there. No liens on homes, no collection calls, no nothing.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Peck.
Actually, that's why I asked if it could be backdated to, or August of 2017. So I agree with it.
Okay, well, I think that Eugene can look into that, we can have that political, you know, debate later, but in the meantime, I just don't want former councilmember Levison thinking that she's going to have to pay $16,000 for running for office. So if we could, there's no further debate, let's vote.
I know. I'm thinking.
All right, that passes unanimously. And then, one other issue. Just so everybody knows, rather than just telling the city manager what to put on the agenda, at least that way everybody knows what's coming. I would like to put on the future agenda, an opportunity for the city to revisit a couple of things to start. One is I'd like to start looking at the collection of data regarding requiring commercial haulers to report the data to the city on how much tonnage of waste and recycling products they actually pick up and dispose of. And then, yeah, I'd like to start there.
Let's make sure I understand this, requiring commercial haulers to provide data regarding the tonnage of waste that they're picking up.
Reporting data to the city, as they're currently not getting complete data.
Okay.
And so that way we, I mean, whether it's issuing a permit or whatever, and then from there, we can talk about other issues. Okay? All right, councilmember Peck.
Thank you Mayor Bagley. Actually, I was wondering, would this not fall perhaps under Lisa Noblock, the sustainability coordinator? If we could have her do that and do comparative with other cities? I don't know as to what they do for commercial pickup.
So that would really.
Because I have a feeling I know where this is going. So if we could get Lisa in the middle of it as a sustainability coordinator.
So typically what we'd do is we'd have our solid waste department, Bob Allen and Charlie Canamides work on this, and they would do it in conjunction with Lisa.
Great.
Based on the information that she has, all of those departments are basically under Dale and Public Works and Natural Resources, and I know they work with each other on those items.
I just didn't want her to be left out of that.
Correct.
Knowledge base.
Correct.
And the reason I brought this up is because EcoCycle came and did a little presentation to us, I think of most of us, but there's no data, so we need to start getting the data. All right, with that, if there's nothing else, sorry, Mayor Protam Christensen.
The other reason that's important is that we have the Regional Resource Conservation Committee, something like that. And we've been part of that for a long time, and in order to actually get some kind of handle on trash, compost, recycling, we need to have a little bit more data. And we, because we have, I mean, this is an explanation more to the public than anybody else, we have our commercial, our residential pickup is taken care of by the city, but our commercial pickup is all done by whoever the businesses choose. And so we don't really, we're not getting information from them. And so in order to really participate and try to solve this problem on a regional basis, it's important that we get the data.
All right, thank you. Then let's go on, city manager, report.
No report, mayor, council.
Okay. Special reports and presentations, we now are going to go on to essentially, I think Ken Buck's office is here to give us an update on federal transportation funding issues. If you can introduce yourself at the podium, that'd be great.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Bagley. I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you. My name is Andy Hall, I'm Congressman Ken Buck's Longmont area representative, so I get to spend most of my time over here, which is great. There's been a lot going on in DC lately, so I thought I would give you a brief update as to what Ken has been working on, and then a few transportation-specific issues related to Longmont. So we've been in and out of some government shutdowns and trying to figure out how to fund the government long-term. The Senate proposed a budget deal that Representative Buck actually voted against. He voted against it because it increased spending by over $400 billion and increased the debt limit by another $100 trillion. Congressman Buck has been fighting to reduce the deficit since he went to Washington DC and continues to do so. He is standing against earmarks. Some in Congress are considering a return of earmarks. Representative Buck is concerned that earmarks will be used to manipulate members into voting certain ways, so he is standing against those. He is standing up for Colorado and its right to have legalized marijuana. Instead of asking the Attorney General to violate the law, he thinks that Congress needs to reform and amend federal marijuana laws to respect the wishes of Colorado voters. He's also working on a disclosing foreign influence act, which improves the Justice Department's ability to enforce the Foreign Agents Registration Act, providing for increased transparency when it comes to individuals in the United States who advocate on behalf of foreign governments. Immigration is also in the works. Congressman Buck is working on a bill that will give states the ability to sponsor foreign workers, provided the workers stay in the state. So this will give states more control over the immigration situation. As far as transportation goes, we all know what's going on with I-25 and train horns and all of that fun stuff. Congressman Buck has had discussions with the US Department of Transportation's under Secretary of Policy, and it has centered around the importance of US 36 MCC Tiger Grant application for this area. Congressman Buck has reiterated how these funds will help deal with train horn noise mitigation, establishment of quiet zones, and railroad crossing improvements. He's also signed a letter of support for this project. As far as I-25 goes, he has signed letters of support for both I-25 North and the gap in I-25 South. We haven't received any further requests from DOT on that, but that's what is going on in DC and what Congressman Buck is working on, and Mayor Bagley and Sean both have my contact info if you have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you Andy. All right, let's go on to first call public invited to be heard. There are four in that group, and then there's a lot more in the other. So let's go ahead and start with Michael Farnsworth.
All right, we'll get you in there. Rob Singer, I assume you're also. Not about Kukua.
All right.
It's about shuffling the agenda, actually. I mean, all I'd like to say is, I mean, just whether you're for or against the whole thing going on, would you guys, would, if we're talking about Kukua, could you stand up, just, I mean, and my only point with this is that, you know, 90% of this room is for Kukua, and I was just going to request it in the interest of, you know, being respectful of everybody's time, that we shuffle the agenda such that it moves it to the front of the agenda so that everybody can get home.
Okay, we'll consider that. Thank you. All right, David Cheknova.
Mayor Bagley and councilmembers, after seeing all these people, I will try to shorten this, because you have a long night. My name is David Cheknova. Excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you. I may not be present at a meeting that is to take place sometime between councilmembers and members of the development community regarding affordable housing, so that's why I'm here today, due to some travel plans. I don't, I'm not sure when it is going to take place, but if I can be there, I will. If not, I'm speaking now. For those who don't know me, I know most of you, I've been involved in developing mostly commercial retail development. I would hope it's good commercial retail development this city of Longmont has always needed and wanted. I developed the old Parkway Center, which was vacant for five years. It's now the house of where Lucky's Market is. I did a fourplex movie theater, the premier building. I did the crossings project that brought the restaurant park to Hoover and Clover Basin Road, that brought needed restaurants back in early 2000. And I've done the King Super Center on the northeast town, and I redeveloped the old Safeway Center on Ninth and Kaufman. I'm invested in Longmont. I shop Longmont, my kids grew up here, they're in college now. Anyway, my daughter, I had dinner with her tonight, and it was an interesting conversation, because we talked about affordable housing, and she goes, "Yeah Dad, I can't afford it." So I'm a developer with a daughter, and an interest in the community, and I'm speaking here on behalf of pros and cons of affordable housing. And I want the city to, I hope in this meeting that takes place, has a really sincere effort to meet with developers, meet with businesspeople. This is not a hasty thing that can go fast. There's a lot of studying and a lot of things that can take place. I've been talking to other developers I know all over the country, and in the last six months, I've been traveling a lot of places. And I've been talking to people, I even was in Vietnam and talking to the real estate people in Vietnam, believe it or not, it was quite interesting. But one of the things that, I think you have a really difficult issue, because this is not just a city problem, it's not a state problem, it's a whole US problem. Affordable housing is an issue. Can it be solved? Probably not. Can it be assisted? Probably so. So how does Longmont go about doing this? Some of the discussions have been putting it all on the crux of new housing developers. Well, there's a reaction that could take place if that was to be done. That would be, probably housing developers would develop outside the city of Longmont. It would add to traffic congestion. They would still develop, they just, the large developers just won't do it. So I think my three minutes is up.
Thank you though, very powerful. Thank you.
Good luck.
Travis Offerman. My eyes have given out.
Hi, Travis Offerman, 1291 Armstrong Drive. I wanted to thank the council for taking my concerns about the extra cost for those with solar panels per month. I want to thank you and all of the staff for expediting that, and I did call LPC yesterday, and they explained to me that they had reviewed it legally, and they had found that it is in compliance, and they had a much better explanation about how it was. And I even went onto the website, and it looks like it's been updated with better information. And I can give just a quick recap, is those with solar panels are, they are charged $10 more per month, but the price of electricity per kilowatt hour is reduced back to wholesale, basically what Longmont pays, LPC pays for the power itself. And so it's very convoluted, and I think it could still just be, I don't know, clearer, but in the long run, there really is no difference, and I think I'm even paying less to LPC in the long run. So it's not really an issue. So I appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't get that much, thank you. The, and I know that, and as we move on to the consent agenda, I guess my thought was, I understand, I don't, we've got some business in the city to conduct, and I don't think it's going to take that long. And so let's just blaze through the consent agenda real quick, and this, the Kukua issue will be most of our meeting tonight. So let's go ahead and do the consent agenda, Val. Valerie, sorry.
First item is Resolution 201815, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado, Department of Public Safety, Division of Criminal Justice for grant funding for domestic and dating violence prevention and education. Item 8B is Resolution 201816, approving future intergovernmental agreements in 2018 between the city and organized crime drug enforcement task forces program for the use of local overtime equipment and authorized expense strategic initiative program. Item 8C is Resolution 201817, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for support and services. Item 8D is Resolution 201818, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and St. Rain and Left Hand Water Conservancy District for water supply. Item 8E is Resolution 201819, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city acting by and through its water utility enterprise, East Cherry Creek Valley Water and Sanitation District, acting on its own and on behalf of its East Cherry Creek Valley Water Activity Enterprise, Arapahoe County Water and Wastewater Authority, and United Water and Sanitation District for a short-term raw water exchange. Item 8F is Resolution 201820, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado State Forest Service for grant funding for forest stewardship activities at Button Rock Reserve. Item 8G is Resolution 201821, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Platte River Power Authority for sale and purchase of Windy Gap Firming Project storage capacity. Item 8H is Resolution 201822, amending fees for Union Reservoir Recreation Area. Item 8I is approval of an agreement for economic development services with the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County. Item 8J is acceptance of $20,000 grant from the Buell Foundation to support the Longmont Bright Eyes Initiative. Item 8K is final approval of an addition to council rules of procedure addressing Friday morning city council work sessions. Item 8L is Support House Bill 181008 concerning the financing of the Division of Parks and Wildlife's Aquatic Nuisance Species Program, and staff does not have a need to pull any of these items.
Councilmember Finley.
I would move the consent agenda.
I still don't want Friday morning meetings, but I'm not going to pull it, because I can count to four. All right, let's go ahead and vote. In that path, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Let's go on to ordinances on second reading and public hearings. Ordinance 980, or ordinance 2018-07, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities to the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018. Are there any questions from council? All right, seeing none, we will open it up to a public hearing. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please? Valerie, can we please close the?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Finley.
I move passage of ordinance 201807.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. The next issue is ordinance 201808, a bill for an ordinance approving an amendment to the economic incentive agreement with JM Smucker LLC regarding contributions to site infrastructure costs. Are there any questions from council? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Seeing none, we will close it. Can we have a motion, please? Please. Bueller. Bueller. Councilmember Finley.
I move passage of ordinance 201808. Second.
It's moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. For item C, the HMS Rogers Road annexation, did any member of council not read the email that we got today from the city attorney? So in a nutshell, okay, in a nutshell, the idea would be to go ahead and approve, find that the annexation, or find that the property is eligible for annexation, and then we would postpone item C3 until after we hear the traffic, have the traffic conversation. So that would save on deadlines, but it would also not require us to have a, we can only postpone it after an hour of public hearing otherwise. So it saves us an hour, and it also means that we still get the traffic study. that we still get the traffic study that many of us wanted. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I have a question about that email. If, if we are going to postpone to a date certain, is that the understanding? How do we know what the date is if we don't know when the traffic?
We're doing traffic on next week.
Okay. All right.
Mayor and council, and councilmember Martin, you could postpone to a date certain, and if it didn't work out timing-wise, we could postpone again. It's just so we wouldn't have to renotice the whole process again.
Councilmember Christensen.
I would like to have the, if we're going to postpone it, I would like to have it heard as soon as possible after the traffic study then.
Can we do it next week? I thought the traffic study was before council, or do you guys want a week or so to digest? All right. Regular meeting?
It has to be a regular meeting. Next week is a study session, and I'm going to, because of some other items that didn't make it through, I need to talk to folks about the traffic meeting. That may be the only item that we have next week, but it's a study session. We can look at the 27th, or we can look at March 5th.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First of all, I want to say I didn't read my email because I've been working with ETS all day to get my exchange outlook back up. It's been down. So, I just wanted to make that point. Yes, I would like to have it on March 5th.
March 5th would work, because if there's any questions or anything that comes out on next Tuesday's meeting on traffic, that gives us some time to get those answers out, and we're not rushing the council con, because otherwise, if something comes out next Tuesday, then the council con may come out Thursday or Friday for the following week. So, I think March 5th actually gives us some time to put together the information.
And also, I would like to have part of what we learn in that traffic session to be part of the conversation with the developers on the 23rd, so that we can all talk about transportation together. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Just as a counterpoint to the March 5th suggestion, we are talking about affordable housing on March 5th, and I'm sure that's going to be an intense conversation as well. So, might not be, it might be more pertinent to put it on the 27th in that concept, but just a, just a counterpoint, not necessarily, just seeing where council would like to go with that.
I'm all for short meetings. That's just me. But, so, do we have a motion? Actually, you know what? Let's do this one first. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and do the second reading first. So, Resolution 2018-23, a resolution finding parcels of land known as the HMS Rogers Road Annexation, generally located between Rogers Road and Nelson Road, and between Hoover Road and Airport Road, eligible for annexation. Councilmember Martin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, then let's go ahead and open up, open this up. Actually, any questions? No. Public hearing? Anyone? Councilmember Peck? Actually, let's, councilmember, stay right there, though, Mr. Cow. Councilmember Peck?
So, just for clarification, this means that they've filled out all the paperwork, they've done all the work, and they're just eligible. We are not voting to annex. Okay.
That is correct. All right, and with that, let's have a public hearing.
Yeah, I just stand in support of annexing everything we can, because we need to get out to the school district boundaries is my thought of how we get to a better defined community. So, I really support any kind of annexation that is inside of the school district boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cow. Did I see somebody else come up to the front, or were they just? No? All right.
Mayor, do you have a list for a public hearing for this item?
Do we? My question, I guess I was assuming, is anybody on this list here to speak on this particular issue, meaning the one that we find it eligible, not it's coming in? So, is there anyone that wants to speak on it being eligible? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Do we have a motion for ordinance 2018-09, which is a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the HMS Rogers Road Annexation, generally located between Rogers Road and Nelson Road, and between Hoover Road and Airport Road, and zoning the property PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, P-Public, BLI Business Light Industrial, and R3 Residential High Density. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move Resolution 0201809 to be tabled until we have, to be tabled until February the 27th meeting.
Second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Mayor, before you do that, one option is to let the people who signed up for the public hearing go today, or you do you want?
Well, I guess my, I'll leave the option up to council and them. If we have the public hearing today, my only concern would be-
Continue it to the 5th, to the 27th.
We could, we could hear it today, and we could even continue it till next time, but I guess I was just assuming that people would want to talk on the day we were voting.
Up to council, just want to make sure you're aware of that option.
Does anyone want to say anything? I'll give them the option, or do you want to come back? If anyone would like to say something, you signed up, you can. All right, well, we'll keep the list and make sure you get on it for the next one. All right, let's go ahead and vote. It passes unanimously with councilmember Finley against. Oh, sorry, almost unanimously, councilmember Finley. I was just wishful thinking. Are you okay? Do you need a hug, councilmember Finley? All right, okay. You got chocolate? All right, good. All right, so we've got item D, St. Rain Valley School District Quail Road Annexation, Resolution 201824, a resolution finding parcels of land known as the SVVSD Quail Road Annexation, generally located south of Quail Road, east of Main Street, west of 119th Street, eligible for annexation. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open up the hearing to the public. Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the hearing. And can we have a motion, please? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I move that we find-
I move Resolution 2018-24.
Yeah, no, I know. I move Resolution R-2018-24, that it's acceptable for annexation.
That's been moved and seconded. That was councilmember Peck. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously, which means also councilmember Finley. All right, let's go ahead. D2, ordinance 2018-10, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the SVVSD Quail Road Annexation, generally located south of Quail Road, east of Main Street, and west of 119th Avenue, and zoning the property P-Public and A-Agriculture. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to better understand the meaning of conditionally in this.
We look to our city attorney. Would you like to answer that question?
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney. We are looking at what those conditions are.
Meaning that it's not being conditionally approved, meaning, meaning it's coming in, but on with conditions? That's all right. Don't, don't say, don't, it's okay. Go ahead, Joni.
Mayor Bagley, councilmember Martin, are you referring to section 2, which speaks to the items for satisfaction of the ordinance, as opposed to a condition?
Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I was specifically wondering the legal meaning of the word "condition," because in, I couldn't associate what was in the packet with the language, so I would like the explanation to be pretty thorough.
Okay, so I will give it a shot, and if I fail, Eugene will step in. So typically, all of our annexation ordinances are conditional, and they are conditional on the satisfaction of, of a few items, which include historic water being turned in, and the other items. And once those are certified by me that they have all been completed, at that time, we record the annexation. So, that's the working description of what the conditional means in these ordinances.
And in this, in this particular annexation, are there any unusual, or are all the conditions just like what you said about certifying the water rights and stuff?
Correct. That's all that's on this, this ordinance that's before us tonight.
All right, seeing no other questions or debate, let's go ahead and vote. We had the public hearing, right? Yeah, we did. All right. We had a motion. And that passes unanimously. All right, next, we'll just go ahead and skip Kukua, and let's move on to general, I'm just kidding, Rob, just kidding, just kidding. I just wanted to point out, we just had, what, eight or nine votes like that, and now we can get to the business at hand. We've only been going for 42 minutes. Do you want a two-minute break before we get into this? I assume this is going to be long. Anybody? Let's just take two minutes. Two minutes. So, as we're waiting for councilmember Rodriguez, just as we start, a couple of things. We're going to move on to public invited to be heard on the issue of allowing residential childcare facilities conditionally to be approved for business light industrial. Just a couple of reminders, I'm going to have to cut you off at three minutes. I imagine that we're dealing with business in people's homes, which can always get a little heated, so be nice, or else I'm going to have to use my gavel, and, and we'll have to like, yeah, bring it. But the, so yeah, so let's go ahead and start with Tom Simmons. If you could come up, say your name, your address, and let's go through. If you could turn on the microphone, please, and get right up in there.
Is that got it?
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Tom Simmons, 1420 Renaissance Drive here in Longmont. It's good to see you again. I'm here regarding Kukua and the flyer that I received. First of all, I want to give you a little background on me. I'm a retired CEO and founder of a local company here in Colorado for 35 years. Happy to be retired. I am ex-board member and vice president of the Boulder County Fair. I am ex-board member and vice president of the Family Recovery Center. I volunteer at Longmont United Hospital, and I actually work, not so much for the money, but for the gratitude at one of our local, old folks' homes, if you will. So, I'm pretty well-planted, and I'm pretty well-rooted in this community. I may not be a pillar of the community, but I certainly feel as though I've given my best, and I've done my best to the, to the city of Longmont. And there's one other thing. I'm an addict. Or better put, I'm a recovering addict. And if it weren't for a business or an organization like Kukua, I likely couldn't stand here and give you this, the accolades that I have. I owe my entire life to a facility like Kukua. Now, jumping to another point, this has, in my opinion, very little to do with rezoning into a BLI as it does specifically taking a look at the existing Bright Horizons childcare facility, which is absolutely perfectly suited for Kukua and the city of Longmont's needs to provide a much-needed resource for our teens. I also have a 17-year-old son, and God forbid, and you never know, if I could be one of their customers. The fact, when I read this, that the negative connotations regarding that the property values will go down, crime will increase, safety will decrease, and our public costs go up, I ask you to just take a look at me. If I were your neighbor, would you be saying the same thing? Once again, this has very little, in my opinion, to do with hammering on this BLI zoning district as much as it does allowing Kukua to occupy the Bright Horizons building under a condition. To put the words that we have illegal injection sites in this same paragraph to me is, I appeal to your intelligence that there's absolutely nothing to do with illegal injection sites here. This has to do with a boys' recovery program for kids who are in need of help. And I guess that's really all I can say. This is the second time I've said this.
Thank you. Is it Simmons or Simons?
Simmons.
Simmons. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. All right, Charles Volkman, or Volkman?
Hello, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow citizens. My name is Charles Volkman with the house at 817 Nelson Park Drive. And I'm here to talk, of course, about the Kukua, the amendments. And I guess my major concern is this rush to judgment. My understanding is that we have a process in the schedule to look at zoning changes, and I don't really And I don't really understand why we need to push these changes, which will affect all of the people in Longmont for a long time, and seem to be motivated by just one group, Kukua. But I'd like to tell you all that I do understand the great need for young men and women with behavior and substance abuse problems. My wife and I have taken care of troubled teens in our home for over 20 years. We have helped probably over a half a dozen boys and girls, mostly boys. And tonight, we have two young men who are staying with us that lost their father. And we've pretty much raised our nephew, who lost his mother. And he has struggled with substance abuse. So I completely understand the problems involved and the need. But I also know that there are costs. We have had sheriffs come to our door in the middle of the night. We've had things stolen from us. And we know that no matter how well-loved and taken care of, that there are going to be problems involved with having folks, any folks, really, but especially this population. And we also have had close family friends who have sent their children off to facilities like this, or, you know, facilities. And again, I do not dispute the fact that these kinds of facilities are needed. But I know that in some situations, parents have spent tens of thousands, if not close to 100,000 dollars, to these facilities. And unfortunately, the kids have come back and relapsed, and actually have created even greater problems for their family members and communities. And at the same time, these, the facilities have profited, no matter whether their outcomes are positive or not. So I don't really understand why we are rushing through this facility, you know, which seems to be in trouble. I've looked, tried to do some research, due diligence and all of that, and have Googled Kukua and...
I'm going to have to cut you off, sir. I'm sorry, that's three minutes.
All right.
Thank you very much. Keith, and I hate doing that, by the way. Keith Caniglio?
Actually, you did it to me last time, so I took a note and made it shorter this time. My name is Keith Caniglio. I'm from 825 Nelson Park Drive. I spoke here three weeks ago regarding serious concerns about Kukua and setting up shops so close to my home. I still have those concerns, but frankly, they've been eclipsed by a larger concern, and that's how this whole situation is being handled. Your stewardship is supposed to be based on transparency and inclusion, and we haven't really gotten that with this particular topic. Instead, we've had some behind-the-scenes negotiations and procedural changes or choices that are designed to bypass public hearing. In December, you sat here and voted to table the proposed special treatment for Kukua, and then a month later, it got back on the agenda, from what I read in the Times call, with informal nods. In December, well, I already mentioned that. I don't think that's how we operate in Longmont, where we've got custom-written ordinances for companies and governance by informal nod. The actions you take as a governing body define the identity of this city. And I just wanted to stop by tonight to remind you of that and to ask that you consider those actions as you take them. There are long-reaching ramifications for your choices tonight and on these votes. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, Cody Gardner?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Cody Gardner, Luca Drive resident, also former probation officer. I was here a couple of weeks ago. I've worked for Boulder County for a number of years, as well as Denver County. I guess I gave the statistics last time. I kind of ranted about what I felt the addiction epidemic has done in our country. I'm not going to do that. I just want to talk about a story. Late 1970s, on national TV in prime time, over 30 of the most famous Americans in this country stood up. They got on national TV, and they said, "I'm a person in long-term recovery." Buzz Aldrin was in that group. Dick Van Dyke was in that group. And they got up on TV specifically to say, "We're not going to sit in silence about this." Couple of years later, crack cocaine came about. Ronald Reagan, George Bush Senior started yelling at the televisions of Americans, telling us, "If you use crack cocaine, you're a criminal. You're going to jail. We're going to punish you." And they continue to perpetuate a system which attempts to incarcerate our way out of a public health problem for all the folks here. And I know there's serious consideration for this, and people have concerns, and that's totally understandable. This is a diagnosable, treatable condition. I've toured, been fortunate enough to tour 500 of America's treatment centers. I've toured centers like Kukua. I can give you names and references and people. I'd be happy to give that to anybody in this room. This idea, this erroneous idea that it's going to drive property values down, is actually quite the opposite. These businesses tend to improve neighborhoods. Crime is low because they're 24-hour monitored facilities. I walk around, have walked around Longmont over the years. I see syringes on the streets, right? This is already going on in our community. Methamphetamine was found in somebody's home today. In these facilities, it does not happen. People are monitored. They have rules. They respect those rules. People are not allowed to just come and go and leave as they please, especially these young adults. So I just think the erroneous idea that this is going to hurt a community doesn't work for me. The last thing I'll say, and I said it last time, this is the only condition on earth that I've ever heard of that we do not diagnose at onset. We look at little kids, and we say, "Well, we'll see what happens to them when he gets older." And it has created an epidemic where there are 65,000 deaths a year. Additionally, 23 and 1/2 million Americans are living in long-term recovery. There's a movement in Washington. The federal government is backing a movement to increase treatment access for people. Wish they'd do a little more. This is the number-one bipartisan issue in the last election. The Surgeon General of the United States stood up last year and released a landmark report on substance use issues, saying that this was a diagnosable, treatable condition of the brain, and we need more access to services. I was a probation officer. I worked with juveniles, worked with adults. If we took every person in America that had cancer, and we put them in a cage, and we said, "Get better," they wouldn't.
Thank you. Fred Klupich? No, it's Fred. Never mind. He's a friend, that's why.
Not anymore. Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and council members. My name's Fred Klupich. I live on Nelson Park Drive in Longmont. I'd like to speak of my concern for the substance abuse facility proposed for southwest Longmont. I'm going to paraphrase Mary Dart, who spoke at the January 30th council meeting. I think she had, what she had to say is important to be heard again. She stated that councils should look at location and demographics before approving a substance abuse facility for teen boys on Sarin and Dry Creek. There are three vulnerable populations in that area. A pathway runs along Willow Creek close by that has a homeless and transient population that has its own share of drug and alcohol problems. The path runs into Willow Park Farm with a lot of unsupervised pre-teens and teens. Alta Vida elderly independent living backs right up to the proposed facility. Mixing these vulnerable populations with teen addicts in an unlocked, and I repeat, unlocked facility at this location seems to be asking for trouble and an increase in crime. While I do agree there is a need for a substance abuse facility for teens, I would disagree to the placement in a BLI zone located next to residential neighborhoods. Another concern I have is there is not any predefined conditions for facility size, type of patients, or infrastructure. BLI zones, I don't think, were ever intended for use by a substance abuse facility. The city council should consider the negative impact on close-by neighborhoods and the concern of the people that live there. I hope that the mayor and city council will have listened to our concerns and oppose not only Kukua, but the zoning change for this area. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. David Prestwich?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. David Prestwich, 2113 Creekside Drive. I'm here in support of the Kukua residential treatment facility for a number of reasons. One is, I've lived in Longmont with my family and several children for 10 years now. One of the things I love about this city is the measure of what I would call, for lack of better words, the inclusiveness. I have friends, neighbors, classmates of my children that have come from all different walks of life, in all different areas of the world, Japan, China, Spain. And the beautiful thing about Longmont is we have a tendency to invite those people to come here and be part of our community. And I don't want to see this community become like we've seen some other neighboring communities become very stringent in the type of people that we allow to be inside of our community. We have a tendency to be a very loving community, and you see that with things like the R Center, the In-Between, and the Hope, and the outreach for homeless and people with challenges and struggles that many of us don't understand and have to deal with, but we reach out in love to those people. The other issue is, even though I've never had struggles with substance abuse, I know many people that do. And when I have the opportunity to speak with them about their challenges and how they overcome, overcame them, the thing they always tell me is one thing in general, and they say, "They needed a place to get help. They needed a place to go. People that understood their challenges and what they were facing, how to help them get treatment." And my question is, if we're not going to allow that in Longmont, people be treated for these conditions, where are they going to go to get treatment? And I don't want to see Longmont establish a precedence that we are not going to allow people with challenges of this nature come to get treatment. The third issue, and I'm not an expert on the zoning issues. I drive, I drove by the location today. I've seen the planflits. I've read the stuff on social media. A lot of the issues and concerns about it sound like we're putting this in someone's backyard. That is not the case. If you drive by the location, it is, and from my understanding of this and the zoning issues, it's an ideal location. It is partially near some residential, but it's not smack dab in the middle of residential. But it's also not smack dab in the middle of commercial, where you want children in a treatment facility feel like they're being banished and excluded from the rest of society. So anyway, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Prestwich. Vicki Burak, and then if, just to save time, Dorothy White. I'm going to call people who are on deck to come down and maybe sit in the front row. So if Dorothy White could make her way down, that'd be great.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Burak. I live at 3159 Willow Creek Drive, less than a mile from the proposed Bright Horizons Center. I do have a petition that 70% of my neighbors have signed in opposition to the Kukua, to the rezoning, to allow for the unlocked teen substance abuse center. This does not include neighbors that I have not been able to connect with yet. I also have a petition from Depot Drive, which is just south of us, and over 70% of their neighborhood is opposed to this as well. I'm just asking, I sent you an email this past week with several points on why we're opposed to this. Please don't pass this rezoning. I propose and said that we do have a problem, and we need to have a committee that looks at where this addiction problem is coming from and how we can help these people. It does need to include people from the medical field, the police and justice department, the schools, teachers, counselors, and recovering addicts. Let this group come up with a comprehensive list of where and how the kids are being exposed to drugs and alcohol, and ideas on how we can stop this in our community. They also could recommend treatment options that are proven and will help local kids. We could perhaps come up with ways to find payment for our low- and middle-income families who are not going to be able to be serviced by Kukua when it's private pay. Kukua is not here to help our local kids. And I would just like to ask, if we can't keep drugs out of our schools and jails, which we can't, we have friends whose daughter comes out of jail high, how is Kukua going to keep it out of an unlocked facility? Thank you for your time. Please, let's do what's right for our community.
Mary Ann White? Oh, got it. Okay. Are you Mary Ann?
I'm on deck.
All right. Cool.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley.
Good evening.
And city council members. I'd like to differ. Well, I'll finish this first. My name is Dorothy White, and I live at 1001 Alta Vita Court. And I would like to beg the gentleman before me who spoke, this is in my backyard. It would take me two minutes or less to walk to the facility. It's that close. And I have a petition here which opposes the zoning change to allow drug and alcohol treatment centers to be placed near residential neighborhoods. 21 of the 30 residents who signed this petition also oppose this change. We are not comfortable with an unlocked drug treatment facility being so close to our home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Webb, you're on deck. Mary Ann?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'll make this brief. That was my mom. It is her front yard. And the assistant to correct the gentleman, one correction, the independent living part of Alta Vita, their back, property backs up against the plastic fence of Bright Horizons. So when you say it's in your backyard, it's this far, Mayor Bagley, this far. So having said that, that's just a small correction. Can I ask a question? I know this is, can I ask a question to the audience? Everybody raise your hand who understands the need for drug treatment rehab facilities all over the country. Please raise your hand. Okay? So there is no contention. There is no argument whatsoever from this group in Longmont that drug treatment facilities are needed in every single city and town and municipality in this country. They need to be high-quality. They need to be accessible. They need to be local to our own community, so parents can be a part of this problem and family members in treatment. They need to be tightly regulated, the way hospitals and healthcare facilities are. I'm a medical professional, and I can tell you that healthcare in this country today, say what you want about it, go ahead, it is highly regulated, highly regulated, because it needs to be in order to be safe. It needs to be evidence-based. It needs to have best practices, and we, so the community can trust that when you go through all this and put your money and time, that the outcomes are going to be there. I think all of us can agree with that. There is a difference between a facility, let's say, that would be brought in by university hospital and built near their new facility, where it was outpatient, inpatient, where it was covered by third-party medical insurance. This is not what we are talking about at all. We are talking about for-profit, less, very loosely regulated, fragmented regulations, federal and state, for drug treatment programs. No one is arguing that Longmont should have these types of programs in our community. The question before you is, where? Not if, but simply where? Where should these, where should these facilities be placed? That's all. That's all we're asking, is to use a common sense approach in doing city planning so that they're placed in the right areas of our town. Thank you.
You might be in the medical field, but if you ever want a job doing a closing argument in court, you just call me. Shannon Warackman, you're on deck. Mr. Webb?
Hi, I'm Larry Webb. I'm the sixth James Circle. In 1992, we moved our Hi, I'm Larry Webb. I'm the sixth James Circle. In 1992, we moved our family here. We raised our family. I work in the food service industry, and I employ a lot of teenagers. And if we believe that there's not a problem, then we are wrong. And since we've established that everybody here wants, since we've established that everybody here feels like there is that need, I won't go into much more of that. My question is, do we want those teens in our neighborhood getting treatment, or do we want them where they already are in our neighborhoods not getting treatment? Thank you.
Beverly Huey, you're on deck?
No. Hi, my name is Shannon Warackman. I'm at 1685 Brown Court. And I am in favor of Kukua. So a couple of points I want to make. One, my brother, actually, my little brother was a heroin addict, and he went through a treatment facility similar to Kukua about six years ago, and now he is completely clean. He's living a productive life, and he has a job, a full-time job, wife and kids. And he wouldn't be who he is today without, just like the first gentleman said, without that treatment intervention. And I visited the facility, and it was similar, like unlocked facility. And he was there because he wanted to be. Another point I wanted to make is that Kukua is taking people that want to be there. They're not taking court-ordered people. They're taking people that want to be there. So these aren't kids that are going to be trying to run away all the time. These are kids that want to change their lives, just like my brother did. And so I haven't heard anyone on the opposing side talk about any real evidence of decrease in home values or criminal activity of centers that are already established that have happened, because I don't know if there is any evidence of that, but there certainly wasn't any evidence of that what I saw with where my brother went. So I'm in favor of this. I saw it in my own, my brother's life, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Ryan Huey, you're on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council. I'm speaking in support of Kukua Academy. And Kukua is trying to help struggling teens. That is their purpose. It is their desire to do good that is getting me here to stand up for what is good and what is right. I want to stand up for those who cannot be here tonight, and that is the recovering teens who need the help. It has been said that all that needs to happen for evil to win is for good people to stand by and do nothing. I can't stand by and do nothing and let ignorance win. Those who are opposed to Kukua being developed here in Longmont have voiced many concerns. Every single one that I have seen can easily be refuted. We just need to have a voice to explain it. Perhaps the opposition wants to silence Kukua because Kukua just might point out some of those mistakes. I think that what we're asking for in the conditional use is just a chance to present what we are doing, but it seems like people want to silence that, and they're not getting a true picture of what is going on here. One of their concerns is that Kukua is trying to slip into the community without letting anybody know about it. Nothing could be farther from the truth. Kukua keeps trying to educate the city about what they'd like to do, but the opposition keeps silencing their voice and then accusing them that they are trying to be secretive. That's not what they are trying to do. Those opposed have already made their conclusions without Kukua even being represented. Jurors need to listen to both sides with an open mind before any conclusions can be drawn. Let's do that. I think the city council wants to do that eventually, but putting off the decision is killing the deal. The opposition knows that and wants to prolong things until there is no more choice. Kukua is out of options and has to move on. In that case, what a shame. They win and cause many people to suffer longer if they, the opposition, can just get you to delay a decision. Another one of their concerns, Kukua will affect home property values. This is what people said years ago when they didn't want people of color to be living in their neighborhoods.
Oh, no, 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 no. Everyone gets a chance to say what they want. It's okay. It's okay.
Group homes that help those with drug addictions are by law permitted to be established right next door. That's not what Kukua wants to do. Drug addicted people are not bad people. The courts know this and are trying to educate the public to this. These are sick people wanting to get better. Kukua, understanding concerns and trying to make a win-win for all, found a facility that is right behind King Supers, a business district. Kukua has to notify residents within a certain radius of the site about the incoming business. Mr. Singer, who is the instigator of the opposition, is outside of that radius, so he might not know what has been done to inform those residents. To be frank, it was hard to find very many residents within that radius. There aren't many.
Thank you very much. All right, Ken Huey, you're on deck. Ryan?
Good evening. I'm Ryan Huey. I live on 1405 Clover Creek Drive. I'm also the son of Beverly and Ken Huey. I'd like to speak for Kukua today and talk about my experiences with my dad's treatment facilities in the past. I've been through his treatment facilities. I've talked with the kids that he's worked with. I'm here to tell you that they're not bad kids. They're kids that need help. And if we veto this option to have Kukua in Longmont, then these kids aren't going to get help. And when they can't get help, then they can't get better. And so my statement's brief today, but I would love to urge the council to make the right decision and allow my parents to do what they do best and help those around them.
Thanks, Ryan. Garth Lindberg, you're on deck. Ken Huey?
To be clear, we want to simply be heard, to finish a conversation. And that's what we're looking to do, is the things that I hear coming out have either absolutely no basis in fact, or only are FUD, a business term for fear, uncertainty, and doubt. It's only meant to scare. Out of ignorance, I believe, although I'm not entirely sure, Mr. Singer has created at least four slander sheets that he has put in people's mailboxes illegally, that he's stuck outside here against council rules, that are horrific. Let me quote from one of his slander sheets. Does this affect me? "If you are anywhere remotely close to a BLI zone, your property value will decrease." Statement of fact, it's bull. "Crime will increase. Safety will decrease, and public service costs will go up citywide. This could also lead to future zoning changes, such as allowing drug injection sites. This is fear mongering at its worst. It's awful. This is horrible things to say about the kids that we're trying to help. They are not going to do anything to harm property values." A quick story, true story, you can look him up. Austin Eubanks got shot at Columbine. His best friend was shot next to him and killed. He was shot in the knee. He was freaked out of his mind. I sat and talked with him two weeks ago at a conference down in Colorado Springs. He was given Vicodin to calm the pain in his knee, and found out that he felt better immediately, emotionally. They gave him four weeks' supply. In two weeks, he said he was addicted. It took him 12 years to get off that stuff. He finally did. When he found a treatment center that he stayed in, he stayed for 14 months. He wasn't out robbing anybody. There was none of that kind of baloney. He just needed good treatment. That is what we're trying to provide. And we're not asking you to please vote tonight on Kukua. We're saying just let us tell you what it looks like, including all these good people who have been frightened by FUD. There's no reason to believe this kind of lie. It's an unfortunate thing to do to people. Let us tell you what we are. And after that process, you vote to let us have conditional use comment. If you hear from us at that point and you want to vote us down and tell us to go away, I will go without a peep. I will not appeal. I will not complain. But find out who we are. Don't listen to lies. Thank you.
David and Sandy Riddle, you signed up together. Why don't you come on deck together? Garth Lindberg?
Hi, Garth Lindberg. Good evening, council members and Mayor Bagley. I'm at 1121 Alderway, and I'm in opposition to Kukua. First of all, I think that this being put under childcare services, I think it should be just labeled what it is. It's a drug rehab center. And the way it's being passed is kind of like people are going to overlook that. Obviously, the people out in the audience aren't overlooking that now. I think the number one problem getting everyone's attention really is that it's an unlocked facility. If in the, if it was in this area and it was a locked facility, I don't think it would gain as much attention. The fact that it's near homes, public park, liquor store, granted, you guys gave notification, but that was, I think it went up to 450 feet or something. That's basically how far a car remote will go. It should be, people are actually in those neighborhoods. The way, the ones that would have gotten notified would have been basically the liquor store, King Supers, some of the businesses there, part of the apartments, and also the retirement center would have been notified. That's basically it. No, no actual homes that I know of would have gotten notified. I don't think there's any opposition to drug rehab facilities. I think you have to ask yourself, who's going to use this drug rehab facility? Is it going to actually help Longmont? A lot of people think drug rehab facility, and they think, oh, that's cool. If somebody needs help, they're going to go there and get help. Well, somebody's got to pay for it. And probably two-thirds of the people out there that need it aren't the ones that can afford to go there anyhow. So this isn't a public service. This is a for-profit business. And also, I think, this being voted into where this one BLI zone is approved for this childcare services that affects all of Longmont, it shouldn't be just that once they have their hands in the pot on this one facility, they can go anywhere else in Longmont that has a BLI zone. It should, everyone should be standing on their own merit. There should be something where the facility has to have certain qualifications, medical background, something to do with helping these kids that proves that they're actually capable of doing that. But number one, it needs to be something that's going to help Longmont, not other states and higher, you know, high-end families and so forth. I was hearing somewhere in the neighborhood of 12,000 to 15,000 a month. That's not something that most parents are going to go shell out to send their kids to a drug rehab place for. And also, I think, Kukua also had Kelo, it was a change academy for Lake of the Ozarks, and supposedly, there was lots of complaints on that place that should probably be looked into, because if that's the same person running this, Kukua, that's relevant to the situation. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Langford, you're on deck. Sandy Riddle? And that is your time. Thank you. We'll go on with David. I'm just kidding.
Great, thank you.
Keeping it light.
Mayor Bagley and city council members, thank you for having me today. My husband and I and our family have lived in Longmont for over 20 years. We have seen the growth that has taken place here. It's been a great place to raise our family. My first encounter with Kukua was actually finding the flyers that were placed around my mailbox area and scattered all over our whole neighbor, well, our whole front area there as they were just left in a big pile. This sparked a conversation with my neighbor and I, discussing the comments that were made on these flyers. And we both came up with the same opinion that the facility like this could help people in our community. All of the negative feelings that were towards this facility just didn't make sense to us. I work with youth in the Longmont area, both the teenagers, both young men and young women, and I know that they encounter problems. Without a positive support, both for our youth and their parents, it will be difficult for families that are seeking help. Our government has relaxed the drug laws, making it available to our youth. I would hope that our city council would allow a facility like Kukua to come into our community, one that helps the youth that are seeking to improve. Before the meeting tonight, I spoke with a close friend who had a son go through a drug addiction, and she actually found an outpatient program here in Longmont that they went to and were able to seek help. She wanted me to express how important the support system is, and how important it was for their family. She couldn't say enough about having a facility that they could turn to, where they could take their son to seek help. I believe that Kukua would bring in that positive support, and I ask that our city council approve tonight's meeting as a second reading and allow Kukua to go through the unconditional use process, through the conditional use process. Thank you.
All right, David Riddle?
Mayor Bagley and city council, thank you for letting us speak tonight. Just to keep things light, I didn't sign up. My wife signed me up. Tomorrow's Valentine's Day, and I'm traveling, so that might be the reason that she signed me up. We've lived in Longmont for 20 years. I've been a scout leader in this area for about that same amount of time. I've worked with hundreds of youth in this community. I've coached soccer for, I forget how many seasons with the local soccer club here. I have, I'm currently involved with the church here in Longmont, and I work with youth in that facility as well. And I have seen the devastation that drugs have impacted these families that I work with. The fact that our state government has relaxed some of the drug laws has had a detrimental impact on some of these families. I can personally tell you about three different families that have gone through treatment problems with their own kids in this community. I'm more concerned about those kids living in my neighborhood and not getting treatment than having a facility that's unlocked. These kids that have problems are living in an unlocked home with oftentimes very little parental support, and are involved in drugs. And I'm more worried about them breaking into my house than kids that are willingly looking for treatment and, you know, having parents that are supportive and paying for that treatment, living close by to me. So I'm not worried about my, you know, my property value going down by having this facility open. So I ask that you please approve this move forward, at least look into, let Kukua tell you more about them, and before you make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. George Romero, if you could come on up to the, you're on deck, but it's Michael Langford who is up at the podium.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council members. I don't have a prepared speech. I'm kind of, I live at 729 Nelson Park Circle, so I imagine I'm about a mile away, or less than a mile. It sounds like, you know, this facility is not going to be helping our local community directly. I personally have my wife's brother is a heroin addict as we speak, and has been in and out of these facilities in Los Angeles that you can walk up to and hopefully get a bed at. Facilities that cost, you know, upwards of $10,000 a month, there's a select few people that can afford that. I don't have a problem with the facility itself being in this location, even though it's so close and yada, yada. I think that's fine. I actually have a problem with the facility not being locally funded with my tax dollars to help local, you know, teenagers. I think that is more the issue here, is that the facility is primarily going to be used to house kids who need help, but from out of state, from out of our community, which I, you know, does essentially work because these kids need to be removed from their location to essentially improve. But when you can walk in and out of a facility, and you're an addict, and you're a teenager, it's very, very difficult to withstand walking by a liquor store, getting a chew, getting a pack of smokes, getting some alcohol from someone. It's really, really difficult to do that. You know, if you're a really recovering addict, you need to be monitored pretty much 24/7, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, it sounds like a pretty expensive sort of semi-vacation sometimes. And I know that there's professional help, and these kids want to be there, but you're putting them in an extremely vulnerable situation when they are young. We're not talking about adults here. This is a childcare facility, so they are essentially under 18. We're not talking about, you know, necessarily well-educated, you know, I don't really know. I just feel like this, a facility like this should be built to help our direct community. And that's sort of my concern. I appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. Megan Green, you're on deck. George Romero? George Romero.
Yes, hello. My name is George Romero. I'm a U.S. Army veteran. Oh, I'm sorry, I live at 1308 Cumberland Drive here in Longmont, Colorado. I'm also a retired veteran, disabled veteran as well. I am also a graduate student at Colorado Christian University, pursuing a degree in master's of public administration. I am also been put in charge of developing a homeless program and leading that homeless program at my church. And I too am a recovering alcoholic. You know, when I came back from, when I came back from war, it took the Army to kind of get me through something that was difficult and frustrating, and I'm starting to get a little emotional right now thinking about it because it changed my life. They sent me to rehab, they got me help, they got me everything that I needed, and now today, I'm standing here in front of you in a master's program. Who would have thought 10 years, 10, 15 years ago, or 13 years ago, I couldn't get off the couch because I was so depressed and so psychotic? And now I'm here to tell you today that there is a reason why in a drug rehab facility, they tell you, you can leave if you want to, because there is no way you can force somebody to want to recover. They have to want to be there. If they're going to walk out of that facility, they're going to do it anyways, because they're making a choice to choose between an addiction and getting their life back together. I want to quote Deborah Furhalden. She's a PhD and associate professor in the Bloomberg School of Public Health Department, a mental health at Johns Hopkins, and she led a recent study published in the Journal of Studies on Alcohol and Drugs that analyzed Baltimore, Baltimore crime statistics in the vicinity of various establishments, including drug treatment centers. The data revealed that the community members should be more worried about liquor stores than drug treatment centers. Furhalden research concluded, drug treatment centers are a public health need, they are necessary as urgent care centers and emergency departments. Our research shows that drug treatment centers do not impact communities any more than any other commercial business. Moving forward, communities should work with researchers, policy makers, and drug treatment centers to have an honest dialogue regarding the placement of this needed resource. One of the, also too, one of the, geez, one of the issues of addiction is that, you know, you have to, you have to be an addict or an alcoholic to help an addict or alcoholic. Necessarily, there isn't a doctor in this world, there isn't a psychologist or sociologist or anybody that can help you recover more or more, be more effective than an alcoholic or an addict necessarily. The reason why is because there is nobody that can understand you as well as an addict or an alcoholic. And I urge you guys to reach out to this facility. I mean, one of the questions that was asked a few weeks ago was, would I want my daughter or kid to walk by a drug treatment center? My answer is no. I'd want them to volunteer there. Being a member of a church, I'd want to go in that, I want them to go in there and like make a difference, because I share the love of God or the love of their family that has been shown to them. I'd encourage the community to get involved with this facility. Bring cookies, donuts, instead of excluding them.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Stephen Morgan, you're on deck. Megan Green.
Hi, I'm Megan Green, Eagan Circle, and I've been scribbling a lot of notes, so hopefully this comes out coherently. But I was here actually to talk about the, the fact that the residential childcare facilities would be zoned as a business light industrial. To me, that seems like an inappropriate place to place residential facilities, in part because, especially in Longmont, these districts, or these zones, I'm sorry, are scattered throughout the city. So there's little pockets of BLI here and there, and here and there. And allowing residential childcare facilities to come into those pockets can cause issues. Also, I looked at the new proposed zoning districts map, and it doesn't show any BLI. It shows a non-residential primary employment section that, from what I can tell, replaces the BLI. So what you're talking about is putting a residential facility into a non-residential primary employment zone. And my concern is that this is getting grandfathered in, and initially, I didn't realize this was going to be so much about Kakuah. I was here to speak to the, to the actual amendments that are being proposed. But if, if this is really about Kakuah, as somebody else spoke, I don't see that in the title of this proposal. There is nothing about that in this proposal. And if this really is about Kakuah, it should be in the proposal, because that's how you get public notice about this. I don't like having to have a neighbor tell me that this is what this really is about. I think there should be more transparency in it, and people should be able to look at the amendment and look at the title and know what's going on. And if this is specific to Kakuah, and you're trying to grandfather them into these zones, I think you need to be upfront about it, and I think you need to let people know about it. In terms of putting one of these type of facilities in there, I think it's rife with risk. I think it's, it's, on both sides, there's a lot of risk. There's a lot of risk to the kids being in areas where it isn't that far to get to people who can provide them with drugs and alcohol and everything. I'm frankly not quite sure why they want to put this facility in a more densely populated area, but it's also, there's a risk to the neighborhood. And I don't know whether it's true or not, maybe it is FUD or whatever it was called, but it's still the perception, and perception does affect property values. So I would just ask that you consider, what are we here to consider and talk about today? Is it Kakuah?
Thank you very much. Paige Lewis, you're on deck. Stephen Morgan.
Mayor Bagley, council members, good evening. My name is Stephen Morgan. I reside at 803 Timothy Drive, less than a third of the mile from the proposed center that we're talking about. As medicine and society evolve, so does our ability to understand and better treat illnesses. Today, modern medicine promotes residential treatment centers to provide the individual medical and emotional support needed to successfully treat illnesses like drug addiction and allow patients to successfully contribute to society. However, we are not here today to debate the effectiveness or usefulness of residential treatment centers, but simply to discuss where to place them in Longmont. Today, the only question before the council is whether a business light industrial zone is appropriate for any properly licensed residential childcare facility as defined by Colorado law. The need for this change is based on the evolution of permissible services that are licensed by Colorado under statute 26-6102. To be clear, the Colorado definition of a residential childcare facility covers a broad spectrum of facilities, including community-based residential childcare, shelters, therapeutic residential childcare, and psychiatric residential treatment facilities. It can be a private, public, or a nonprofit endeavor. Currently, Longmont's municipal code does not provide a classification for residential childcare facilities, as this was not defined in 2001 when the zoning code was last updated. However, the business light industrial zone currently allows for similar uses like daycare centers, hotels and motels, medical offices and clinics, skilled nursing and rehab facilities, and private schools. The BLI zone was essentially created as a buffer zone between full-blown commercial or industrial zones and residential zones. The code encourages mixed residential and business uses as live-work units within BLI zones. It is a logical fit to allow residential care facilities as a conditional use within the BLI zone. When finalizing the code later this year, the council might find it appropriate to extend the use of the residential childcare facility, excuse me, into both residential and commercial zones as well. Absent this proposed amendment, the residential childcare facility like Kakuah is proposing could likely be classified as a group home care, which is permitted, excuse me, in all residential zones, so critics might be careful what they wish for. This amendment, in fact, has nothing to do with the specific debate centering on Kakuah. Whether Kakuah specifically is allowed to operate its treatment center in its proposed location is irrelevant at this time, although I too voice my support for this much-needed facility. The small but vocal coalition against the zoning change is based on nothing more than fear, suspicion, ignorance, and little of any regard for the facts. The residents will be supervised 24/7. It is an unlocked facility, meaning that the kids are not kept in cages. They are allowed to leave the facility under adult supervision only. These young adults in treatment will not be drug users, but are instead learning how to properly socialize and develop the support system.
Sorry to cut you off, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Susan DeBane Gill, probably slaughtered that one. You're on deck. Paige Lewis.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thanks for the opportunity to talk with you here tonight. I have contacted council a few times about my opposition to both the location of this facility in this place, which lies about two blocks from my home. I live at 805 Nelson Park Lane, which is in the Nelson Park neighborhood. I think you've heard from several folks that are in that neighborhood. Frankly, I find it surprising that we were not in the public contact zone because we are so close. I can see this facility from the street outside my house, and so I think you should look at where is that public contact zone? You know, we moved to Longmont about seven years ago, my family and I, and we really love living in Longmont, and particularly southwest Longmont. It's a place that I hope to continue to raise my family and continue to see that neighborhood grow and develop in a really positive way. I don't believe that this is an appropriate location for many of the reasons that folks have stated tonight, but I do want to focus more on the question that's before you, which is whether you should make a rush to judgment, a special exception to make this change to the zoning. And I would ask that, I think you've seen enough public concern on both sides, that this warrants a thoughtful and reasoned approach. Make sure that you've done your research about the full impacts of this kind of a decision on the community and on our families. Make sure that you've considered carefully whether or not this is the right location for this facility and other facilities like it. And I also just want to say that I do find it offensive, all of those that have come up and said that, those like me that have concerns about this and that are opposed to this are victims of fear mongering. We're not victims of fear mongering. We're not ignorant. You know, this is not about propaganda. This is about legitimate concerns of families in the Longmont area, and I hope that you won't discount our opinions and say that they are just the result of fear mongering. They're not. You know, I'm concerned for my family and my neighborhood, and I hope that my elected representatives will be thoughtful and take the time needed to consider whether or not this kind of a zoning change is warranted, and then also whether or not this kind of a facility should be so close to residential areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gretchen Schmidt, you're on deck. Susan.
Susan DeBonagill, thank you, council and mayor, for giving us this time. Two of my uncles, when they were teens and teen immigrants, felt the pressure so much that two of the six turned to alcohol for help. I talked to you last time about the thousands of hours that I have spent working with youth and listening to some of the extreme difficulties that many of them operate under. We have established here tonight that all of us feel a need to help these kids, but if I can add one more acronym, it's very easy for us to do the NINBI, not in my backyard. It would be really easy if everybody in America could push this ugly situation onto somebody else. But I don't see the city stepping up with enough budget to put a treatment facility together. I don't see UC Health stepping up at this point. I don't think that we are in the right if we simply stand by and do nothing because we haven't found the perfect solution yet. If we have a person here who has successfully, and I have also looked into his past operation in Missouri, I don't see any big problems. I do see many success stories. I know that he's hiring medical people. He has hired certified counselors and psychiatrists. So maybe there's a more ideal situation somewhere, but at this point, we only have one person step, or one organization stepping in to fill the void that Arapaho House has left, and that is an enormous void. That is an enormous void. I've talked to people that I work with, and every single one of them says, we need more help for these young people. Like someone has expressed, would much rather have people in treatment than people on the streets just doing their addiction without supervision and without a treatment possibility. Going back to my uncles, Uncle Picheter was able to get the kind of help he needed in the language, language and culture that he understood, and he recovered and has a great family, and he bought farm after farm after farm and has become very successful. Uncle Dido was not able to get any kind of treatment, and he has lost four houses at this point. And thank God he has a lovely wife who pulled the kids together, but to see my two uncles have such vastly different lives simply because one could find treatment in his language and one could not. We cannot be the ones to demonize the children. We cannot be the ones to just want to push the ugly problem all the way away. I grew up close to Provo Canyon Boys School, and there was no drop.
I know it's emotional, I know it's great things you're saying, but I'm going to have to cut you off. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kai Ching, you are on deck. Gretchen Schmidt.
Good evening. I'll just say the most important thing that I'm wondering here first, and then if I get to the other things, great. I'm wondering, in our democratic society, in our city of Longmont, right here in the United States, I guess, let's just say, may I address first? 1060 Kane Drive, Longmont, I'm within a mile of the facility too. But I'm just wondering how a business who was slated to present their case, present their evidence of past success, present their, their business model, was slated to present, and then someone in our community can go and raise a bunch of concerns and get their opportunity to present, even taken off, taken off, period. I mean, that's scary, that someone cannot even present what they have to offer because someone else goes and spreads things that, I don't know if he's actually met with the business owners and investigated their business, investigated their business model, looked at, you know, everything that they, that is about that? Have they? I don't know. But the fact that someone can go around and spread this, spread information that may or may not be fact-based, and a business does not even have the chance to present themselves in a fair light, that's concerning to me. And, and that's the main thing I'm asking for, is let them present, let them present their evidences of success. And to the point about regulated healthcare and, and all those things, if we look at fruits of healthcare, therapy, what, you know, the wide gamut, many times, the success is not in the over-regulated, burgeoning system that we have in our society. There are many fruits that are not part of that very, very over-regulated system. And as far as not helping people in our community, if we're having children come in from other states, my own experience with helping my little brother move from Phoenix to Washington, where we lived at the time, to get into a facility, I found was very important that he needed to get out of the environment where he got into trouble, and he wanted to change his life, like a lot of these people have said. And so he was able to come to Washington. So if we have children coming from other states, we're a blessing to them, and maybe our children are going to other places. But if you listen to Ken Huff, you may understand that in only a couple of years, that population starts to change to serving the local population of where these facilities are. So I would just say, you know, why don't we hear what their actual program is, hear the evidence of success? And no one can say what family members will go to, what length family members will go to, to help a child, someone they love, get to where they need to be and get to help. Okay? People will go into great debt to help their family member. I know, I've done it myself many times. We've had nieces, nephews, my brother, many people live with us over the years who have needed help. And no one can say that certain populations are limited, because people have heart, and you can't limit that. And people, well, there's a will, there's many times a way that people can get help, no matter where, what facet of life you've come from. You know, offer the blessing, and who can receive from it, you know, why shut it out just because some people might not, or some people might not have success, but some people will. And that's what it's here for, the people who will have success. And so I think we, we need to hear what the program is, and, and it's understood to be conditional. You know, it's not, and the fact that, right now, by law, my understanding, is that it can be in right on a street, right on Nelson Park Drive, in a house. So, you know, that's an option too. And I, I think that we just not, need to not- And I think that we just not, need to not have a system where people can't present a case in fair light and present what they have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Kai Ching?
Hi, my name is Kai Ching.
Can you get that up? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kai Ching. I live in 65 Nelson Park Drive. Thanks for letting me speak out here. So I just have two topics I would like to address. First is like, I would suggest before making any zone changes to allow the drug rehab facility to operate, I would like to ask the council member whether you have received the complete analysis on the pros and cons, like why we should allow such facilities in this particular loan? Is there, is that a different loan zone which can better accommodate these use cases? And I believe that Longmont is not really in the middle of nowhere. Like, big cities like Denver's might already encounter similar problems before. So I wonder whether or not we can get some guidelines or suggestions from another city. Also, like CU Boulders is really nearby, and there are other very good universities around this areas. I wonder whether we can get some academic inputs here, like as what is the research, with the current research is telling us, like how, whether or not such facility is good to be nearby the residential communities. Also, I strongly oppose the idea that we allow the change first, simply because we have the chance to reverse the actions. I don't really understand why the KAKUA facility cannot represent their ideas first before asking for the zone changes. In my opinion, if they want to show the effectiveness of their program and how helpful their program is, they should do that first before initiate the process to make those changes. I'm a software engineer. A lot of time, I tell my manager that, yep, I will do the optimization of my work laters. But in fact, lots of times, I got buried into other tests coming in the future, and that optimization is never done. So I don't like the idea we just approve it first and try to reverse it laters. The second part I would like to address is my general feeling about have a drug facility nearby. I mean, the idea of having more drug rehab facility is not controversial, and I think most of us will agree they are needed. However, it becomes controversial when the facility may locate near our neighborhoods. It is not hard to imagine why that's the case, because such facility can have potential negative impacts on our life.
Thank you very much. Does anyone, so this is a little weird. So I know that Rob Singer signed up on both lists, and technically, we're only allowed to speak at one time, public invited to be heard. But I know that he's also kind of the, I would say, the leader of this movement. And while it's uncommon, we're also kind of treating this as a quasi-public hearing. And I think that he probably didn't realize that when he signed up and spoke for approximately 20 seconds and asked us to move it to the front of the program. Is there any objection to allowing him to speak a second time? All right, Rob Singer?
So, thank you, mayor, members of council, Rob Singer on Creek Court. It's been said 100 times here already today that, I mean, nobody is against getting these kids help. Nobody. Everybody in this room raises their hand when, I'm sorry, everybody in this room is in favor of getting these kids help.
You need to get in there more.
Sorry.
It's the paper pointing to his ears.
And I honestly believe that Ken Huey has the best of intentions. I honestly do. And I think Megan Green, one of the people that spoke earlier, pretty much nailed it. This isn't about KAKUA. I mean, you aren't voting on KAKUA tonight. And learning about KAKUA is a moot point because it doesn't matter. The next company is the one that matters, and the one after that, and the one after that, that when you change a city's zone and grant a vested property right for what you can do in that zone, it dramatically impacts everybody. And what you're doing is making a change to the code for the benefit of a single for-profit organization by doing this. And it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to do that. You know, I don't want to, you know, belabor too many of these points here, but, you know, you talk about notification and having an opportunity to say some things. In your packet is a letter from Don Macy, the next-door neighbor who is doing all of this development work, everybody who is very, very opposed to this is, and he didn't know this was happening until last week. The guy who owns the entire property right around there and doing the development didn't know. And so we're having these conversations about whether, you know, nobody shows up to the neighborhood meeting that Mr. Huey has, that's disingenuous at best. If you want to argue about the property rights, we can have all those kind of conversations. I'd ask you to look on an MLS listing, one, if you can find me one that touts the benefit of living right next to a teen drug rehab facility, I would be, I'll be shocked. So we can have conversations about whether this statistic, I mean, if there are perceptions, there is reality. And the reality is, is that, you know, Mr. Huey gave a great example of somebody who was helped. Nobody is arguing that. We all know people get help by these facilities. What we're arguing about is where you put them, how the rezoning affects everything. And then specifically, the example of the kid, you know, I could give you an example of a kid that happened here, you know, a few years back in the Longmont Boulder area, where the kid was, you know, robbing somebody to pay for a drug addiction, and the other kid gets shot. People are familiar with those kind of situations. So we're not, we're not being disingenuous. I mean, our family personally has taken in a heroin addict who has been released from rehab like five times. That person passed away.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Appreciate it. All right, so just, the what? That was Rob Singer. Oh, yes, we do. You're right. There was someone on the wrong list. Yes, Mr. Farnsworth, I'm so sorry. You should have gone first. But we save the best for last. Best for last.
Name is Michael Farnsworth, 25, College Court, Longmont, Colorado. Am I getting through this? My voice is bad.
Just get up there close.
Okay. All right. One thing about being last is a lot of the things that I would have said have been said. The key point that I understand in zoning is that this is a request for a single situation in this zone. If that happened again in the same kind of zoning, it would have to go through the same procedure to be, if it could fit in that zoning, if it was the same type of facility. You would have, you would have to approve it to be in that zone, right? Okay. So it can't just automatically be populated. All right. That's my impression on it. Maybe, might look at it this way. Everybody in the room agrees that this type of facility needs to be done in Longmont. It's where? And everybody agrees, not in my backyard. All right. This facility in this spot, I don't live near it. I wouldn't mind it if I did live near it, but that's always up for discussion. Maybe this would bring the community together to put in a community-supported facility in town for the community kids. Or somebody else might come into town and duplicate the idea again. But as it is now, we have a chance for a facility. Somebody is willing to put in money to put a facility together, agreed it's a unlocked facility. But there are one, during the daytime, it's a one-for-one staff, pretty near one-for-one. After hours, it's a staff of a minimum of one-for-four individuals in the evening, after hours. So they're going to keep track of these kids. They're going to know if somebody walks off. I would request that you consider changing the zoning. I think the council knows one of the reasons why Mr. Huey is pushing for this is that he has a problem in with the timeframe to buy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Appreciate that. So as we move on, just by way of what we're voting on, just so council's clear, as well as people who are here, I want to make sure that, I guess, as mayor, speaking for council, as far as the transparency concern, the, we are way ahead in the process, meaning we usually don't have, at this point, we do not have hearings in this much opposition. The issue tonight is only, so a while back, we decided as a council that we weren't going to make motions on the fly, that we would come together and if we wanted to discuss something, we would put it on a future agenda. And so the motion was made that we would reconsider this issue. So tonight, we're only voting on reconsidering the issue. We are not approving the zone. We are not approving, we're not approving the zoning change. We are not approving KAKUA. We are doing nothing other than, you know, when we made that vote and we said we don't want to talk about it? Somebody said, you know what? I'd like to talk about it. So if it passes tonight, then this will go on a future agenda, and we'll have a first reading and be able to hash over the change of business-light industrial to permit residential daycare facilities or youth rehab facilities, whatever you want to call it. That usually is not noticed because there is no specific anything going anywhere. And so, and so that's the next step. There'll be a first and a second reading to change the zone. Then in April or May, we're going to have, correct me if I'm wrong, Eugene, but then in April or May, we're actually changing the entire code. The entire code is changing. Business-light industrial is going away, and it will be changing to, I believe, mixed-use commercial and, anyway, it's going to be changing, right? So we're going to have that discussion probably a third time. And then after that, once there is some type of zoning establishment that would allow something like this, it's conditional, we've told staff, meaning that you don't have a use-by-right. If you want to put in a facility like this, you need to come to council, and you need to make an argument that it's not going to impact the neighbors. Then once you come with a conditional request, then we go through a permitting process, notices given. And so my point is that, like I said, this is, as far as transparency goes, the reason why there's been no transparency is because we're just on like, step one of a million? I don't know, a lot. And so, and the other thing is that by way of facts, as we get ready to discuss this particular vote, you know, I have it on good authority that, you know, there's no guarantee that Mr. Huey, or Dr. Huey can purchase this particular piece of land. So it's, there's no guarantee that he's ever going to buy it, meaning that there are other parties interested. There's other uses. There's other, so we are not talking about KAKUA. I mean, I know everyone's talking about KAKUA, but we're not talking about KAKUA. And I hate it when there's votes like this, because me personally, I mean, I've got friends, church guys, workout partners, on both sides of the issue. So it's always, always a tough one for me, because I'm still going to do what I want. Anyway, so right now, this is not a second hearing, it's just a motion. A motion to reconsider bill for an ordinance amending chapters 15.04 and 15.10 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding residential childcare facilities. Again, to reconsider and talk about it in the future. Yes, Harold. Eugene, somebody.
Mayor and council, Eugene Macy, attorney. One small clarification on what you said. Most of reconsideration would take us back to the point that council was at right before it voted. So that would be, first reading had already passed, it would be at second reading.
Right. Okay, so this is-
We're not starting over necessarily.
But we're going back to second reading.
Correct.
And I believe that we would all be in agreement to have yet another hearing.
You could do that. You don't have to do that, because you would be at the point, right before you took that vote.
We had a hearing.
You already had a public hearing. You could have another hearing and schedule it for a future agenda, or council could discuss and act tonight.
All right. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would oppose another hearing on the vote to change the code. And the reason for that is, to change the code is really not about KAKUA, as you said. It is about changing it for any residential facility that wants to come into the new BLI. So I think that the hearing for the public should come in when and if Ken Huey applies and is granted, goes through the process. If we change the code, then he must apply to have a residential facility within that code. And then that would be when the public hearing would happen. So for me, to have another public hearing about KAKUA is a moot point. This is about changing the code for residential addiction centers or any other residential-type center. And that's just my thought. I don't think another public hearing at this point is needed.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think this may be just a clarification of what we can do at this point as well. I would actually like to go back to the point where we were going to consider this, the creation of a residential childcare facility zone as part of the broader zoning activity that is going on. I see no reason to amend BLI and then, six weeks later, discard BLI. So can, is it possible to move just to roll this zoning change into the zoning change?
The answer was yes.
The answer was yes.
Deep answer, Harold. Thank you. Mayor Protam Christiansen?
Well, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of really, really thoughtful testimony on both sides, which shows what a great town of thoughtful and kind and compassionate people we have. But as we have stated, this isn't, my objection to this is that it appears that we are changing code for one business, and that isn't how we can work. We have to change the code and make it, we are going to, we're in the process of changing the code. I don't want to, as Councilman Martin said, I don't want to change the code and then three weeks later, change the code again. I, what we were talking about originally was whether we wanted to make this a use-by-right or a conditional use within the BLI designation, which is going away. I don't want to, the reason I am opposed to reconsidering this is because I just, I think we need to wait until the code is being updated and is presented, and that will be within a month. Yes?
April or May?
Yeah, April or May. So that being the case, I would really like to, well, okay, I'm not voting for, we'll let him have a little hissy fit. I'm having the same coughing problem. I would like to- I would like to, I am not going to vote to reconsider this because I want to wait for the code change.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I actually do have a question for Planner Schumacher, so you can come on down to the podium, please. I know you've been trying to for the last couple. So Planner Schumacher, my question being is, I saw heads shaking when, when Mayor Bagley said that the BLI would be turning into the mixed-use employment. Maybe that's one of, isn't there a couple different zonings that the BLI will be merging into depending on what sites they're at?
That's correct, council. So the BLI, existing BLI zoning, dependent upon the land use categories of the envisioned Longmont plan, will be changing either to primary employment or mixed-use employment.
Okay, thank you. That, that was helpful.
Sure.
So I guess where I'm going to go with this is that, just as a thought exercise, if you will, we do happen to have an extra set of flexibility in our conversation about the issue tonight because we are going through this zoning code change. But let's say we had already changed our zoning code or we're not in, in the process of changing our zoning code, would you still have the same problem about possibly addressing a zoning amendment because it was brought up by a particular, a potential business? Or, I mean, because to me, it sounds like, yes, this was, and it was admittedly by the city, triggered by Kukua Academy. The city has admitted that. But if a resident found some sort of hole in our zoning, because that's essentially what we have right now. This is obviously, and we didn't come up with the residential childcare facility term, that's a state term, Dr. Huey didn't come up with that, we didn't come up with that, and our planners didn't come up with that. And as such, when it was brought to their, the planning staff's attention, that there was this hole in our zoning code, they did go through a lot of our, all of our zoning codes, I would imagine, to try to find one that they felt was the most appropriate. So it wasn't like this was flippantly chosen as BLI just because of the Bright Horizons facility. I tend to take a little bit of umbrage with that concept. I actually have worked long enough with our Planning and Development Services staff to know that they wouldn't flippantly do something like that necessarily because the zoning does affect our entire city, not just one adjacent property usage. So just because we're going through the zoning code, I don't feel that I would be in support of just tabling it until we get there because I feel that we need to, we need to figure, figure this out before, that way when we do get to the zoning, the zoning code change, then everyone will know what's changing and what's going where. Otherwise, this will be kind of, again, a new thing that will be, either be going into primary employment or mixed-use employment. I don't know, that's probably a little esoteric, but at the end of the day, I would actually be in support of, of actually the zoning amendment in general, much less the reconsideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would, I would agree with Councilmember Rodriguez. I, I do have a question, though. When we do go from BLI to the two different zoning codes, which one will we put the residential Which one would you recommend we put it in?
So that is the process that we're currently going through with respect to the update to the Land Development Code. In addition to mixed-use employment and the primary employment, which the BLI would be converting to, we'll be looking at other zoning districts as well with the new lineup of zoning districts to see whether there are other potential zoning districts where these types of facilities could be located.
Oh, so there'll be several that would be a conditional use for a residential childcare facility?
Right. So potentially, in addition to, for example, mixed-use employment, potentially could look at a mixed-use corridor as well as a potential landing place for these types of facilities.
Okay. And really, the reason that we brought this forward is because right now, we have a hole. We don't have it anywhere. So it is, it's lacking in our development code. Is that correct?
Right. We determined that we do not have a, an appropriate land use category for these types of facilities that are licensed by the state.
Okay. Thank you. That, that answers my question. I, I understand that I really want us to plug this hole, that would be what I would recommend. It is a conditional use. That doesn't mean that Kukua can go there. It means that they'll have to go through the process with more public hearings, as Mayor Bagley said.
So eloquently said, please.
Oh, yes. So eloquently said, and it was really quite elegant and a great description of what we're going through. But that, that being the case, I would be in favor of us reconsidering the ordinance on second reading because it is something that's lacking in our code and I think the sooner we fill that hole, the better.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think that, my understanding is that we have given direction regardless of at which step that we fill the hole by putting in a residential childcare category. Whether we fill the hole now or whether we fill the hole as part of the larger discussion about land use and zoning, that it will stay a conditional use. So first of all, am I correct in that understanding?
Yes, I think that's a fair assessment. Regardless of the zoning districts that we look at, that we would consider it to be a conditional use.
Yes. And so then, if that hole is filled as a part of a broad consideration of what activities belong in what land use zones, then we're redesigning things with all the data. If we do that, then we are likely to come up with a better answer. And because it is not about Ken Huey and his real estate problems or whose backyard it happens in at this point, I think it would be better for the city to only go through it once and consider it as part of the re-zoning consideration. I don't like making double work for the staff, frankly.
In order to continue the meeting along, I move that we reconsider ordinance 2017-77, which was a bill for an ordinance amending chapters 15.04 and 15.10 of the Longmont Municipal Code Regarding Residential Childcare Facilities. Councilmember Martin?
I'd like clarification as to what a no vote does and what a yes vote does.
I believe, Eugene, you can go ahead. You get paid for this.
So do you, mayor. So not necessarily a no or yes vote, but a, well, I guess a yes vote says I want to reconsider. I want to be transported back to, in time to that point before we voted last time on second reading. No says no. I don't want to do that.
Yeah, that doesn't really answer my question. That was the part I understood that you just said. So if we don't reconsider-
It's dead.
-then do we never, ever have a residential childcare zone or do we not amend BLI?
If the motion reconsidered does not pass, my understanding is we'll go back to the previous council direction, which was to have it incorporated into the overall land use code amendments coming in May.
Thank you.
With no further debate, let us vote. Hold on, hold on, one second, one second. The motion fails three to three in a tie, which means that it fails. So it, councilmembers Rodriguez and Finley and Mayor Bagley for, councilmembers Peck and Martin and Mayor Protam Christensen against, which means that we will probably see you all again in May. All right. Let's go ahead and go on to general business. This shouldn't take too long. We all okay on wrapping up the meeting? All right. General Improvement District Number One Service Agreement. Can we have a motion to recess and reconvene?
So moved.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes with Mayor Protam probably hitting her four, but just not hard enough. So we'll just pretend it's unanimous. And we are now, and we have now reconvened as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One. Now, we will discuss Resolution LGID 2018-01, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for Administrative Services. Is there any discussion? Saying none, can I ask for a motion, please? Councilmember Finley? Got to be quicker, Councilmember Martin.
I move passage of Resolution LGID 2018-01.
Second.
Let's vote. And it passes with everybody's unanimously, with everybody hitting the button hard enough. Can I have a motion to adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and reconvene as the city council?
So moved.
Look, it's been moved and seconded. That was by Councilmember Peck, Valerie. Can we go ahead and vote? And that also passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and have final call, public invited to be heard. Strider Benson has joined us and I'm sure that he has something to say. I'm sorry, Councilmember Finley, do you have something to say? Then could you put your hand down, please? Thank you.
Okay, it says right here, I'm just reading. Yeah, I had a different idea in mind and I listened to all this discussion, which I thought was very well presented, although there's a whole lot of membi factor and we need to be aware of the concerns and the propaganda. All of this is mixed up in a jumble. And I was impressed with the statements on both sides. But what we've got, we're dealing with trying to get one drug rehab facility in town where 65,000 people a year, mostly young, are dying from the epidemic that we have of, you know, especially opioid and other drug stuff. And we have a national structure where 90% of the national propaganda is for war and military and pollution of the oil and coal and all of this stuff. And there's very little public space to discuss what the heck are we doing with our country, our structure, our philosophy, and what the heck is really going on? And the massive inequality and the incarceration regime and the profits made off of that. And what we really need to be doing is nurturing our society into understanding and dealing with these kinds of problems. The biggest problem going on is meaningfulness and the lack thereof in our entire social structure, which puts 90% of the public focus on how to exclude people and destroy people and create pollution and make more profits for the, you know, one-tenth of one percent. We have rapidly expanding inequality and we have the youth growing up with no concept of meaningfulness as to who we are as human beings and what are we doing? And so I would just, I heard one contention that came up that might mitigate this a little bit. There's not only the membi thing, but there's the, what about local and what about lower income? If there would be negotiation with the corporation that's doing this or a public mandate or something in that realm about what about 20% local or lower income incorporated into this to make it part of the community? Thank you.
Of all the people I hate cutting off, it's you, Strider.
Thank you much.
All right. Let's move on to mayor and council comments.
Sir? Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, John Coe?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll keep it brief because I really do appreciate the city staff. And actually, I'm not even going to take off, take up where I left off last week because I've had response from the staff. And the staff is amazing. Staff is totally amazing, okay? And I've had brief conversations, they've been productive. And I'd like to represent, you know, recognize many staff members, but I guess the one that made a difference to me in the, in my, you know, previous trials is an officer named Aubrey Oden, I believe is her name, and amazing. And just by hearing her voice, it was really relaxing, you know, because, you know, and just even to hear a voice that is familiar, even yours, you know, all of yours, you know, anyway.
I love you, John Coe.
You can say that as much as you want, sir. You can say anything you want about me as a man, you know? And even my former colleague, anybody here. And let me, I mean, I don't know which story to tell because I've been through, you know, tribulations, but they're all about, you know, a caring community is what it comes down to. And as far as this facility, we need three of these facilities, we don't need one. And we need to sponsor people into these facilities and we need to expand our boundaries to the school district. We need to make sure that our children are safe by having late night available, even groceries. I was shocked when the 24-hour facility grocery store was not open because of theft. And we've changed a lot and it's not this council's fault. It's a slight change and it's only come here recently. And I wish my light was out because I've been shocked recently. And it doesn't matter because this is my community and I'm stuck with you guys. And it doesn't matter at all because I'm invested in this community and we need this facility. We need, you know, even the stuff, I mean, I might have raised the bar on net neutrality, but we're safe in every regard because we have people here who care and that's all we need. And we need people to communicate, especially communicate. I mean, I think that words have lost their meaning and that's why I, I mean, I will point you to this one's website, although, you know, I don't talk clearly, but it's vdict.com. And it shocked me. And the way that it shocked me was just that in translating language from English to Vietnamese, it does it instantly and it's actually right in your phone, which is really the shock, you know? You, you pick up your voice and your, your phone recognizes your particular voice and then it translates to Vietnamese immediately. And this vdict, you know, V is in Victor, D is in Dog, I is in India, C is in Charlie. Anyway, it really, and also is in French. And I, I translated some stuff from Mike Butler immediately and I knew it was good because these are really the writings of Thich Nhat Hanh that are mixed with this that helped. And it, just try it, vdict.com and it actually clarifies things. That's how I actually write technical documents is by translating them over through and it actually takes out all negative sentiment because Thich Nhat Hanh does not use the X's or the Z words in Vietnamese.
Thank you, John. All right. Now we can go on to mayor and council comments. I believe, Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I would just like to say that it's always good to listen until the end because Mr. Coe and Mr. Benson, I think, had the two best ideas about residential childcare facilities for drug treatment that were expressed all night. We need more than one and that the city should negotiate with any, at least any for-profit facility of that sort. Some sponsorships for the less fortunate locals. So I think those are great ideas and I hope that when this all shakes out, that those ideas are incorporated.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things I would like to, even though there's almost no one here- Two things I would like to, even though there's almost no one here, give a shout out to Commander Jeff Satter, who gave a really wonderful presentation to the Boulder County Consortium of Cities about, along with two officers and another outreach officer at the police force, on what we're doing with co-responders and lead, and those are the two grants that we okay tonight. Those are things that help our officers deal with the opioid and, you know, the main problem is by far alcohol in terms of addiction, but also the mental health problem is huge, and that is an enormous burden for the police. But he talked about what we're doing, and that was really inspiring, and everybody in the room who is from all over the county was inspired by that. Secondly, I would like to read something that President Lincoln wrote in 1854. President Lincoln changed his view on slavery and on many things over time. Part of that was meeting Frederick Douglass. Anyway, but Lincoln, to think that he was just a politician and that he was just trying to hold the Union together is not really true. So here's what he wrote. "If person A can prove however conclusively that he may have right enslave person B, why may not B snatch the same argument and prove equally that he may enslave A? You say A is white and B is black. It is color, then. The lighter having the right to enslave the darker. Take care. By this rule, you are the slave to the first man you meet with a fairer skin than your own. Oh, you don't mean color exactly. You mean whites are intellectually the superiors of the blacks and therefore have the right to enslave them. Take care again. By this rule, he would be the slave to the first man you meet with an intellect superior to your own. But say it is a question of interest, and if you can make it your interest, you have the right to enslave another very well. And if he can make it his interest, he has the right to enslave you."
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I know we just have a few minutes, so I was talking to our assistant manager, no, yeah, Assistant City Manager Sean during the break, and I think that our meeting with developers is growing rapidly, to the point where they said they have to move it to the library to house as many people. So we need an agenda so that it isn't just wild. And how would you like us, Sean, to give you our ideas as to what, you sent out an agenda, you said, but I don't get to look at it because my mail is down? So, go ahead. Well, I just have one request, that if developer, this whole thing is about how can we, how can we change, amend city code to make it easier, more palatable for developers to build affordable housing? So what I would like is that when developers, whether it's a microphone or just one-on-one, they have to tell us which code it is that is keeping them from developing affordable housing, instead of coming up to a microphone or sitting at the table with 10 minutes of telling us what we've always done wrong. I don't want to hear that. I want to hear where we can go forward through our coding process to help them. So that's my comment on what I'd like for the agenda.
You conservatives. Just kidding. No, I was just joking. Councilmember Martin?
I very much thank Councilmember Peck for bringing this up. I think that maybe the agenda should stipulate that we would like to have evidence, whether it is evidence based on a theory that worked in another city, or whether it's evidence based on some of the things that we heard the other day, Councilmember Peck and myself, about how the math works of doing development. And I think both of those are useful information. The last concern that I'd like to express is that maybe we should plan more than one of these meetings, because if we have to move it to the library, I'm not sure how we're going to absorb that much information or that much dialogue in, what, two hours? So I'm glad we're engaging, but I want to engage enough.
Just, can we, I guess, can staff just prepare an agenda like they always do and then get it to council like they always do? And the key, I guess, the key topic on this one's going to be, the only topic, which is discussing with developers, just the codes.
Yeah, so we can get to, have you sent it out, Sean, or?
No, the agenda has just been circulated among staff. We wanted to get your feedback before we tried to take a stab at an actual final agenda.
Yeah, because what I was going to say is technically, this is the meeting that you all wanted to create where you can have the discussion, and so we can take these points, combine it with what we've put together, we will send it back out to council and get feedback from you all.
And I guess I'd want one more on there. I guess in addition to the codes, what I'd like is possible solutions, meaning, a couple of them have given some really good ideas that involve, you know, like if somebody comes along and they find cheap land, and they say, hey, I can build 50 affordable housing units right now, but I'm not building anything in Longmont, they could build it and get credit for the next one. You know, things, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not saying that's a good idea, I'm just saying that that's an idea that they share that I'd be interested in hearing more about. So, Councilmember Finley?
I'd like to hear all ideas. I think we all think best when we think out of the box and collaboratively, so I want to hear everything they have to say about what would make them want to build affordable housing in Longmont. I wouldn't want to limit it.
Mayor Protam Christensen?
Yeah, I think that, well, this being the first meeting, I think we also need to put on the agenda a discussion of the rules and the procedure that we're going to generally follow. This is sort of, this meeting with developers is part of the inclusionary housing that we're moving forward with, but I think we need to have at least a part of the agenda be a discussion of the rules and the procedure we'll follow for our future meetings. Yes, things for the developers are, that I've heard, say, restoring the 50-foot width. They could build a lot more houses if they only had to build them 50 feet wide, or even smaller, which is what we already granted in certain instances. And frankly, all of my neighborhood is 50-wide lots, and so it's sort of just restoring a possibility that was always a possibility for creating something that a developer can deal with and create more housing per acre.
I'd like to announce that El Comité de Longmont is having their 2018 annual fundraising dinner. That's going to be on Saturday, March 10th, Saturday, March 10th, at the First Lutheran Church on Third, 803 Third Avenue. It's going to be from 5:30 PM until 8:30 PM. So again, March 10th, Saturday, 5:30 to 8:30 at the First Lutheran Church. There's going to be a silent auction, there's going to be dinner, there's going to be a presentation, but the kicker is they will not be selling tickets at the door. You have to get your tickets in advance. So in order to get your tickets, you can go ahead and call Lizzie Alipas, and her number's 303-651-0839, or you can also reach her at lizzie, L-I-Z-Z-I-E, at elcomitedelongmont.org. Or you can call my cell phone, and I'll tell you the same information, or send me an email. All right, Councilmember Finley?
Unfortunately, I will be at National League of Cities, I assume some of the rest of you will be as well, and there's a conflict there. If you would please extend my regret that I won't be able to attend, I would buy a ticket, but they could give it to somebody, maybe?
Okay. I'm sure they will take your money, Councilmember. All right, seeing no other, seeing no other comments, Harold, any questions, comments, or concerns for council?
I do have one question. So as we look to the transportation discussion that we were going to have as a pre-session, one of the things that we were working is an item that we were potentially going to put on that was going to take some time for council. We weren't able to get through with that item, so there's not anything for the study session agenda. So we can continue starting at 5:30 with the pre-session, or we can move the pre-session to the study session. I just want to be cognizant of council's time and schedule and get any thoughts you all have, or we can start at 5:30. We just don't have the end time going into the study session.
That's next week?
That's next week.
Life must be rough, Councilmember Finley. Do you want to have council early that night at 5:30, or do you want to have council at 7:00 and do basically the pre-session as our business? We could, right, if we do it early, we can meet in the study session room and have more of an informal meeting, right?
Yeah, that was what we were going to do, is have a more discussion with staff, so...
You guys want to do that? I kind of like that idea. Oh, yeah, public would still be invited. We're not going to allow John Fryer to come, but yeah, public.
Yeah, the public, pre-session, publics, they're invited to the pre-session, just like they are any study session item.
5:30, you have consensus. Let's do 5:30 on Tuesday. You got that, Mr. Fryer? So on Tuesday, next Tuesday, council, instead of being at 7:00, is going to be at 5:30 in the study session room, because apparently we have nothing else to discuss other than the traffic study.
So technically, the traffic study was always going to be as a pre-session.
Right, right.
The only thing we're doing is technically canceling the study session.
But that makes us sound lazy, so we're just moving the study session earlier to 5:30 and canceling the pre-session. Well, then you have to take notes.
Right.
All right, not a technicality. All right, fine. You're in spirit. Well, that's right, we're going to get there earlier. All right.
It does give you more time to digest and talk.
Okay. Eugene, anything?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, then, oh, sorry, Councilmember Peck?
I'd just like to make a real fast suggestion. When we do a consensus, can we raise our hands? Because this head nodding for two years has driven me crazy.
All right, just, let's try it out.
Okay.
Let's physically raise our hands if we agree to the 5:30 time.
Cool.
We have consensus. Nailed it. All right, that's it, we're adjourned.